Hold on a second, Andrew. Let's wait for Amanda to get back.
Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's meeting of Monday, or excuse me, Tuesday, March 19th. My name is Jim Lehan. I'm joined by Anita Mecklenburg. Mr. Calcutt is running just a little bit late. He should be here within the next 10 minutes, but we are going to open the meeting. We do have an executive session this evening. The executive session is in order to consider three separate matters. The board will convene into open session at the conclusion of the executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of Zurich versus Norfolk ZBA, 115 Park Street, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town.
I will second. We have a roll call vote?
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lehan, aye. We have a second matter, if you would, please.
Absolutely. We request a motion that the board convene executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 20A 3, to discuss collective bargaining with the Norfolk Municipal Clerical Employees and the Norfolk Highway Department employees represented by local 301 AFL-CIO-CLC, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board.
I will second. Again, a roll call vote.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Jim Lehan, aye. We are now in executive session. Thank you, Anita.
Good evening and welcome to the March 19th version of the Select Board meeting. My name is Kevin Calcutt. I'm joined by my associates Jim Lehan and Anita Mecklenburg. Please join me in kicking off our meeting in the way we typically do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, everybody. Justin, would you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
Yep, yes. We have a public hearing vote, whether to excuse ourselves of no excuse early voting by mail, an appointment of the Inspector of Animals, prospective appointment to the ZBA, voting to accept a donation of a bench for Fails Memorial Park, consider approval for more opioid settlement distribution, consideration of approval of reallocation of county ARPA funds, review and execute the warrant for annual town meeting in May, the use of Townhill for Memorial Day, as well as approval of various road events, and then a use of Townhill for Discovery Day. And then we discuss the financial forecast, various departmental budgets, and overall discussion about the fiscal year '25 budget.
Very good. Thank you so much. Our first item this evening is our public comment period. This is where we invite anybody in the public to come up and share with the board for around three minutes on items that pertain to the purview of the board or the town administrator. So this evening, do we have anyone interested in sharing for public comment? I'm seeing no interest from the room. Anybody online? No interest. In that case, we'll be moving on to our second item this evening, which is a public hearing to vote to opt out of no excuse early vote by mail for the May 7th, 2024 Annual Town Election. Justin?
Yes. So in the board's packet, you have some information about the law prescribing this necessity if we desire to opt out of no excuse early voting. We have our town clerk Carol Green here, who can talk about it further if she likes. But essentially, if we want to opt out of no excuse early voting, the board has to have a public hearing. They have to take a roll call vote. And it is largely predicated around, these are pretty exponential costs if we do go this route. Carol, do you have anything to add?
I just had brought these two. You can take one and pass them down. It just kind of gives you a little context for it. What I had, the intent behind this is to, with the Votes Act of 2022, they made it that for local elections, we have to do vote by mail, which ordinarily isn't a problem. And we actually have to vote to hold in-person early voting, which you guys graciously, you know, do for me every year. I think it's important. This particular year, being a presidential year, we had those cards that went out to everybody in the state. And anybody that checked off all elections this year, that also includes the annual town election. You see for the cards, on the cards, nowhere on there, doesn't even mention local elections. So I think that a lot of people, you know, would have, could have been given the opportunity to not check off if they didn't want it. My fear is the cost. Right now, we're looking at about $1,600 just in postage to mail them out. And then you're also going to have the cost of the additional ballots, which should be another probably $400 or $500. So we're looking at around a $2,000 cost. And I'm not sure that the gain is going to be, would be worth the cost. You guys have already voted for me to do the in-person early voting. We have 70 hours of in-person early voting in a week. And this also does not affect absentee balloting. That's a whole, that's a whole separate thing. So anybody that's not going to be in this, you know, not going to be around, has a physical issue, anything like that, they can still get their ballots by mail. We're not trying to, you know, omit anybody that, you know, that has an actual need. It's just this small piece of the early vote by mail is what I was asking to, if we could vote just to opt out. And this doesn't, this isn't a coverall. This is only for this year. Each election, each town election would have to be voted on separately, just like we vote separately for the hours for in-person early.
Fantastic. Thank you, Carol. And just to clarify, too, this is only for the local election. You are still able to do no excuse early voting by mail for the presidential?
Oh, gosh, yeah. Every other election.
The state primary?
Yep. This is just, this is purely for the local election.
Very good. Thank you. Jim, any questions?
No, I don't. I read the law. Thank you.
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Since this is a public hearing, I think we should open it up for anybody who has any comments, who would like to share any perspectives, questions, or anything of the sort. So at this point, we'll open it up for anybody who has anything to share as part of the public hearing. Nothing to share. Carol, you were so complete in your explanation that there is just not a question to be had. Thank you. Justin, anything else before we close the public hearing?
You don't need to close the public hearing, but nothing else that, just have to do a roll call vote if you...
Very good. Thank you so much. In that case, I would accept a motion.
I move to vote to opt out of no excuse early voting by mail for the May 7th, 2024 Annual Town Election.
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Jim Lehan, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. And thank you so much again, Carol.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you, Carol.
All right. That brings us to our third item this evening, which is to recognize an individual. Justin, go right ahead.
So we're very proud to say that Mr. Bill Conklin, who is the town's Veteran Service Agent, he's here tonight. He was recognized by the Commonwealth for his distinguished service for, as being a Veteran Service Agent. He served the town for over 15 years in that role. So just wanted to take an opportunity, I know the board wanted to take an opportunity to recognize him for his service. Bill's here, and I don't know if Bill wants to say anything in particular, but he's here for the board.
Bill, please come take a seat. Join us and enjoy the minute of fame here.
You'll all be drowsy. I appreciate you recognizing me and the award, of course. Been doing it for 15 years. Jim was actually on the...
You're blaming me for this now, Bill?
Yes, it's your fault. So at any rate, it's been a pleasure to serve our veterans. Some people ask me, what do I do? And that's always intimidating, but there's two aspects to my job. One of them is to enroll veterans into the VA, the federal VA medical system. A lot of them have no idea it exists. They've had, in their minds, satisfactory coverage from their private insurers, but you can, in addition to that, enroll in the VA medical system, which will essentially pay for all your medical costs. It has a very fine hospital system here in Boston, and it's a great benefit to veterans. There are about 400 veterans in this town. The second major component of my job is to dispense financial aid to veterans who are qualified and are in need of financial aid. Now Norfolk is a relatively affluent city, so that's not a heavy load. But it's something that requires the distribution of money every month. And in the 15 years that I've been doing this, we distributed about $300,000 to veterans who were in need of financial aid. That aid does not all come from the taxpayers of Norfolk. In fact, only 25% does. The other 75% comes from the Commonwealth. And it's been my job to administer that. It's something that requires a lot of documentation. It has lots of ways of going crosswise. And if you make a mistake, then the state simply doesn't reimburse the town. And I'm pleased to say, in the 15 years, we've been fully reimbursed, so I haven't made any tragic mistakes at this point. So that's what I do, and I'm very proud to do it and hope to continue.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
Bill's right. I was on the board when you were appointed, but I'll tell a little story about Bill, because before Bill came on board, we had a shared veterans situation.
Correct.
And you talk about all the things that you do, and you mentioned mistakes. Mistakes can be very costly. And in the case prior to your appointment, we had a couple of those. And the town paid thousands of dollars for those errors. And since you have taken on it, it's been a flawless process. Whatever dumb decisions I've made in the past, this was not one of them. You've just done a terrific job, Bill, and we're very grateful for all that you've done.
Thank you.
I just, so often, I'm sitting here in awe of the people that make the town work, and you're one of those people. And thank you so much for your service to our veterans. It's such important work, and we're grateful to have you in that role.
Bill, I can tell you that in my time here in town, I've spoken to veterans of all ages, even some of the younger ones who have identified the complexities associated with navigating some of these processes. And to be able to have a resource like you available to them is invaluable. And to do it for as long as you have, and as immaculately as you have, it's really truly something. And it is an absolute treasure to have you here in our town and being able to look out for the interests of our veterans. So truly, on behalf of everybody, thank you so much for all that you do.
Now, with this award, Bill, comes another 15-year re-up.
Yes. Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
All right. Our next item this evening is to vote to make the annual appointment of the Inspector of Animals. Justin?
Yes. In the board's packet, you have some information from our current Inspector of Animals, indicating her willingness to be reappointed. This is an annual appointment that the Select Board considers. It runs from May to April of each fiscal year, so that's why it's at a different point than our usual appointments. We've included some information about what the Animal Inspector does, which includes animal bar inspections, et cetera. So, you know, Ms. Thibodeau is willing to continue in her role. So if the board would reappoint her, is that reconsideration?
Very good. And just making sure, not with us online tonight? Nope. Okay. In that case, asking questions probably wouldn't be too fruitful at this point? Yeah? Okay. Anita, any questions for Justin on the reappointment?
I do not. She's done a nice service for our town.
Nor do I.
Beautiful. Well, in that case, I will take a motion to reappoint.
I move to reappoint Susan Thibodeau as the Inspector of Animals for the period beginning May 1st, 2024 to April 30th, 2025.
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous vote. Thank you so much once again, Susan, for your service to the town. We greatly appreciate it. Our next item this evening is to vote to appoint Michael Brogan as an Associate Member of the ZBA for a one-year term ending on June 30th, 2024. Justin?
Before the board is considering for a ZBA appointment, it is for a term ending June 30th to 2024. ZBA voted approval of recommending this appointment. Mr. Brogan said he would be here in attendance, and I believe he is here in attendance.
Would you like to come up and join us for a second? How are you doing this evening?
Great. How about yourself?
Fantastic. Thank you. So typically on these appointments, we'll let the candidate identify their interest in the role and what they're looking to do to make an impact and whatnot. So please, the floor is yours.
I'd just like to help, do my share in the town, and I think the ZBA is the best board for me to help with that. I've been a resident here for 55 years, so I've been around. Yeah, just want to help. That's it.
Very good, and thank you.
Yep.
Anita, any questions?
I do not have any questions. I'm grateful for your willingness to participate.
Good. Jim, any questions?
Nor do I.
So, Mr. Brogan, I remember the last time that you came before us, and we had this discussion about the potential of you joining the board. And I had, at that time, identified some concerns because of the past interactions and all that kind of fun stuff. But I did note back then that I wanted to see a point in the future where we could leverage some of this incredible experience that you have in a capacity that could help the town. And I intend to make good on that. You know, I'm in favor of this appointment to be able to see how we can move forward and make some of these things work in the future. So I do look forward to you lending your service to the town. I look forward to tapping into that experience and seeing how you can contribute to the future of the community. But I do need to call out that I do still harbor some of those concerns, and this is my first step to try to ease those concerns moving forward. So I hope you can understand that perspective from where I'm sitting.
Sure.
Thank you. So I don't have any other questions, per se, so at this time, I would accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. And that is a unanimous vote. Congratulations, sir, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll bring us to our next item this evening, which is to vote to accept the donation of a bench for the Fails Memorial Park. Justin?
So this evening, we have Ms. Jerry Tasker, we have Santo Rizzo, who's an Eagle Scout, and we have fellow members of the Historical Commission here. They're supporting a local Boy Scouts Eagle Scout project to clean up some trails at Fails, Bertha's Grove at Fails Memorial Park. But, and so I'll let Santo and Jerry talk about the project. But one other thing that we would do with this would be to install a bench that they're proposing to install. So that would be something that the board would vote to accept to gift and authorize its installation. But you want to hear from Santo and Jerry about the project?
Absolutely. Please come up and join us.
Welcome.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. It's nice to be here.
Nice to have you.
Well, I'm Jerry Tasker. I'm the current chair for the Norfolk Historical Commission. I've been around the commission for over 20 years and took over as chairperson about a year or so ago. And I'm here tonight with Santo Rizzo to ask the town's permission to work on a project at Fails Memorial Park. And I want to give you some background information about this project and the reason for it. About a year or so ago, one of our longtime board members, Barbara Bartholomew, passed away. And the Historical Commission decided that the best way to honor her would be to install a bench in Bertha's Grove at the park in her memory, because Barbara is the lady responsible for the creation of the park. Without Barbara, there would be no Fails Memorial Park. So to that end, we enlisted the help of a Boy Scout who was looking to earn his Eagle Scout project. So that's Santo's job. And he's here tonight to explain, you know, what he hopes to do in the park. And we are also here to ask your permission to move forward with the park, because it is a town-owned park.
Absolutely. Sounds fantastic. Go right ahead, sir.
All right. So I'm Santo Rizzo. So me and Jerry have been working on Fails Memorial Park to make sure that it's more attainable for everybody to enjoy. And this includes, you know, installing a new bench, replacing the old bench that is, you know, not very functionable. And this also includes adding in new rule signs, making sure the park entrance is more attainable and like even more accessible, and also adding in new trail markers as well as trail signs to make sure that people understand where they're going in the park. And that's one of the main goals that we have. And this is specifically focusing on the grove of the park, which is basically the center, right by the, you actually have a map of the area. You guys want to hand those down, please? Thank you. So basically, this one's not for you. Basically, we plan to make sure the park and the grove itself is more accessible for people to enjoy. So there's many trees and branches and things like that down, and we plan to, you know, add and install birdhouses for different species of animals to be able to enjoy the area, as well as humans to be able to enjoy the area. So, yeah.
Fantastic. How long are you anticipating that this project's going to take?
I would say, so including like time for the benches and parts to arrive, it's probably going to take around three months. The actual work itself, I plan to be able to get done in three days, maybe four or five, if, you know, worst comes to worst. And this includes multiple days to, you know, install the signs, the bench, and the wood chips that we plan to, like in the center of the park, and as well as the entrance. So that's my plan at the moment.
Any questions?
No, it sounds like a great, well, maybe one question. It sounds like a great project. In terms of the bench, it sounds like the Historical Commission is going to be providing.
I was just going to tell you that the Historical Commission has voted to purchase the bench and, I believe, the signs as well. And I've been working with MCI Norfolk. The representative over there has been really very helpful. And we hope to actually order the bench within the next And we hope to actually order the bench within the next couple of weeks, because that's going to take several weeks for the bench to be ready. And, you know, we want everything to be ready so that Santo can stay on track with his timeframe to finish the project. And at the completion of the project, it's our hope to have a little dedication ceremony at Bertha's Grove.
That sounds fabulous. Thank you.
And please let us know when that would be.
Oh, I absolutely will. I certainly will.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions, but just a couple of comments. Troop 80 never ceases to amaze me. We're going to need a whole new wall to cover all of the Eagle Scouts that have come through Troop 80, so congratulations on your efforts here.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Outstanding group of young men, and I'm just, we're very proud of you. And in terms of Barbara Bartholomew, my goodness, she was a walking history book of Norfolk.
We miss her.
Her mind was incredible. I miss her, too. And I remember when we first did that park down there.
She was tied.
I'm just glad you're recognizing her and giving her that, well, I shouldn't say recognition, because she wouldn't want it.
Oh, I know she wouldn't.
She would not want it.
I know.
But she was a treasure, and I'm so happy you're doing it.
Thank you. Buoyo.
Well, if we don't have any other questions, is there anything else you'd like to add before we move on to taking a vote?
I don't think so, other than permission, and yeah.
Oh, one other thing. To move forward with this, will we need to apply for any permits?
I had a few written down. I don't know if we would need a, just because of the area of the, the area of the park, I don't know if we would need a, what's it called? It's a wetlands permission or a dig safe permission.
Good for you. You did your homework. I think we would work with DPW and Controvation Commission to see what you actually require to do. So I've let Blair know, and Caitlin is well aware, too. So we'll regroup after this meeting and make sure you did.
Thank you.
Good job. You did a lot more than some other people do in looking what you needed to do, so good job.
We actually walked the entire park with Caitlin.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's actually enough work on the other end, the Main Street entrance, for another project in the future.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do you have a question?
Did you want to ask about the sign?
Oh, I gave them, oh, yes. One of the things we wanted to do was to install a rule sign, and I think I passed a proposed one around, and that's actually based on some signs that I've seen in walking trails. Because one of the items that I, we've all noticed when we go to the park, people just, they let their dogs loose and they run, and they don't pick up after them, and there's trash. So we just thought a couple of friendly reminders at each entranceway of the park might be helpful, but of course, we wanted to ask permission for that, too.
So in terms of signage, Justin, I don't think there's anything that we necessarily need to approve, is there?
The board wouldn't. I think that's another conversation we'll take a look at internal, just make sure we align with everything there.
We're just trying to cover all our bases.
That one definitely follow-up with myself.
Any other additions or questions before we get into our vote?
Can you answer as well? Yeah.
Well, thank you so much for the comprehensive presentation. I think you answered all of our questions and gave us a really clear idea of what the project is going to look like, and now we're just excited to see it come to fruition, so.
Yes, we are, too.
Thank you both so very much.
It's been a long time coming. You're welcome.
All right. So with that, I would accept a motion to accept the donation of the bench for Fails Memorial Park.
So moved.
And authorize its installation by the DPW.
And the amendment accepted.
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous approval.
Thank you.
Thank you so much once again, and best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Definitely invite us.
We definitely will.
All right. Our next item this evening is to vote to approve opioid settlement distribution. Justin, looks like we got some more applications in, is that right?
We did. We got two more applications in. We've got application from the SAFE Coalition as well as Norfolk Public Schools. The total, the total request is for $15,000. The board approved or authorized this expenditure of $7,000. We have $13,000 left to approve of the allocation that was approved at town meeting. I just want to provide some information for the board. I've reached out to the state and particularly the CARE-MASS team. That's the group that essentially says whether an expenditure is approved distribution of opioid funds. I'm still waiting to hear back from them on the previous allocation of $7,000, because we've received some conflicting information from the state on that. So they responded back to me today for quite a bit of time, and it's still going to require us to set up a Zoom meeting to discuss this. So next week, we'll have confirmation where that $7,000 is an approved allocation. We will check with these applications as well to make sure that these are approved. I don't see an issue for that. But I did want to let the board know that we are doing that work with the CARE-MASS team. And so we'll have a follow-up in terms of the boiler replacement that the Select Board authorized an expenditure on.
Thank you. And I imagine that the motion for this evening now includes.
I would just say contingent upon.
Contingent upon the approval of the use.
Yeah.
Very good. So we have one application from Norfolk Schools for $8,001, one application from SAFE Coalition for $10,000. Obviously, we only have $13,000 remaining to be able to distribute. Do we have an established process for the monies that were not allocated to the Select Board's direct purview, as opposed to the money that's sitting in a town meeting release fund?
May I understand your question? Are you essentially asking what's the approved method for allocating the funds that are in the stabilization fund?
Correct.
Is that what you're asking? No, we haven't established anything. I think this is part of conversation with the board. You know, typically, when we do capital or different expenditures, we do it in the fall. If the board wants to do that in the fall, I think that's a time to do it. Or you could say, hey, let's pursue it in, you know, May town meeting. We weren't prepared for that, but we can be prepared to do that. It's the board's decision how you want to.
Yeah, we would prefer to wait to throw curveballs at you for May until two weeks before.
Thank you.
So we're giving you way too much lead time if we were to do that now. But I think that lines up appropriately. Us being able to distribute these funds ahead of spring town meeting and then setting up a process for us to be able to accept another round of applications for the distribution of those other funds in the fall makes sense to me, unless anybody has a different idea on the board.
No, it makes sense.
And the reason why that makes sense, too, even though it was a little ahead of, they jumped the gun, this state did give us another appropriation of opioid funds. I can't say how much it is, because it was before they supposed to, but we will get some more funds, too, to replenish that opioid fund as well.
Very good. In, I'm sorry, any questions, Jim?
No.
Any questions, Anita?
Well, I'm wondering if there were issues with using the funds for purchase of a boiler, would there be issues with using the funds for a salaried position?
I think this is part of why we want to go to the CARE-MASS team and just make sure that these are all eligible. I've seen other communities do something similar to this, but for us, for the authority, we're going to speak directly with them, and we're going to ask them in writing to say this is approved distribution. I don't want us to have to walk back again on it.
So in looking at the breakdowns in the applications, I see that the SAFE Coalition requests actually total $7,000, $5,000 for community awareness campaign, $1,000 for community Narcan training, and $1,000 for transportation for support. And I think you said the other one was $8,000 for the schools, right? So it looks like we're a couple thousand short.
Yeah.
The only comment I might, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go.
I'm a little uncomfortable in voting contingencies on spending money. And I would rather see us, I think, get full clarity on the eligibility considerations on this. We have another meeting in two weeks. I would rather see this as a sort of a collective vote with some comfort that everything is the way it should be, rather than having to potentially walk something back. Just my suggestion.
Well, we do know for sure that the SAFE Coalition's requests fall into the use, right? That we know for sure. The SAFE Coalition's requests all fall within the allowable uses.
But we have requests that exceed the pot.
Yes.
And so rather than, you know, dividing it all up at this particular point in time, I'd rather look at it holistically and take a look at all of the requests, and then we can judge where, you know, whether or not, we don't have the money as it is so requested. So that's, sort of makes me think we should just, let's wait this out. I'm anxious to get it out, too. Don't misunderstand. But let's, I'd like to have clarity on all of the eligible considerations. Let's decide and get it right out, and I think two weeks is a reasonable way to get that answer.
We could, I'm sorry, as a compromise, because I agree with you that it would be better to have all the information upfront, we could approve $2,000 to the SAFE Coalition, because that is, that doesn't provide a future conflict for us, and provide that $2,000 for them, and then in the next meeting, when we have more information, decide on the rest of the monies.
I'm fine with that.
And then, and then it's closer to town meeting, so then if we wanted to spring something on Justin, that would give more tension.
That takes us in out to be able to do it.
Much more tension, which is.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'd just like to hold off on the others.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to be transparent with the board. I've had a lot of surprises already with the board. You won't be able to do that unless you insert an article specifically for that in May. So I don't think the board intends to do that, but I just want to make sure you know that.
That's correct.
We're being a little playful here.
And so, I know, and I appreciate it. The doodle poll for when we're setting up the meeting, just for timing for your, and I think we can meet with them early next week, Monday, so I think it should be more than enough time to get something in writing from them for your next meeting. So I just want to give you that information.
Very good. So in that case, we would be taking a motion to approve the distribution of $2,000 to SAFE Coalition for the purpose of Narcan training and transportation? Is that correct?
That is correct.
That is correct.
Did somebody, go ahead.
Further clarification. If the board takes that vote, this is how I'm going to operate. If, assuming that CARE-MASS team says this is an eligible expense, we're going to work with finance to give that funding right away and not wait for the next meeting.
Correct.
Yes, correct.
Also likewise for the boiler replacement fund.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
We already approved that.
Yeah.
All right. So in that case, I would take a motion as I previously outlined.
I move that we approve $2,000 to the SAFE Coalition of the opioid fund to pay for harm reduction and treatment.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Justin, did we do that right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Our next item this evening is to vote to approve the reallocation of County ARPA monies. Justin?
Yes. The board allocated funds, County ARPA funds, and it was specifically appropriated for stormwater expenses. We received feedback from the county that some of those expenses were ineligible, but we have another project that, and let me say this, the town is endeavoring, we've responded to all the budget closeout memos, we've utilized all of the appropriation for the local distribution. We are submitting an application. Barry, Blair, and Todd have worked on an application for a Seacock culvert, and that would utilize our full allotment of County ARPA funds. So this is sort of a procedural vote, reallocating those funds for that specific project, and you have the information about that project in your packet. And Blair is here if you have any questions regarding it. But the intent is to not leave a penny behind of money that we got from county, and this is an expense, a significant expense.
Lord knows that the county is looking forward to scooping up whatever's left over from anybody who doesn't get it in in time. Okay, great, thank you. Any questions for Blair on the reallocation, Jim?
No, none.
None?
Look at that. That was an easy one. In that case, I will take a motion to approve the reallocation of County ARPA monies.
I move to reallocate the ARPA money to the Seacock project.
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Great job, Blair.
Thank you.
Our next item this evening is to vote, vote, review, and execute the warrant for the annual town meeting. Good, Justin?
All right. In the board's packet, you have an article list, as well as you have language. Town council and I have reviewed this language. We're still making, potentially, there's maybe small edits, but I think for the most part, in terms of all the articles, you have an article list. How we've tackled these, the warrant previously, is sort of a high-level running through of it, so I'm going to continue that. But if you have questions, we have some of our departments here, we have Tom here for any legal, for sewer questions. I think you just interject, and we'll try to get you the response there.
Very good.
So for articles, one is a typical annual election article, two is our unpaid bills. At the moment, we don't have any unpaid bills. Three is our typical budget transfers article, so that's largely, you know, transfers at the end of the fiscal year. Todd had mentioned to me this morning, Jay at our last town meeting, he wanted to see something a little bit different for transfers for fiscal year '25. So we think we can do that within the budget and accomplish what Jay was looking for, or we may have to add an article to do a transfer for fiscal year '25. It's specifically for ambulance receipt expenditures. So that, just give me the heads up, we might have a budget transfer fiscal year '25 article, potentially. Number four, we're going to put these on all the time for approval of collective bargaining agreements. This is a typical article. We have nothing at the moment for that article. Five is the compensation schedule for non-union employees. We're proposing one and a half percent. Six, seven, eight are our typical budget articles associated with the general operating budget, the water enterprise one, as well as the wastewater. We have nine and 10, which are associated with capital expenditures for cash and debt. We have a new project regarding ambulance, potentially, that we're going to look to address in the debt article, and Chief Kenny can talk about that when he talks to you about the budget. 11 is another typical article, reauthorizing the increase of revolving spending limits or setting them. There's only one change. We're proposing changing passports from $5,000 to $7,500. We've, Todd and Sarah here, if you want to dive into that. After that is another Chapter 90 authorization, hearing reports. We are including another article for the Water Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year '24 revenue shortfall. We've talked about that before. Then we have special act petition that talked about us going back to the state. I want Tom to speak to you specifically about that at the end of this, if you want to highlight that as an article to talk about. if you want to highlight that as an article to talk about. Then we have our typical CPC article, articles. CPC voted at their previous meeting Thursday to proceed. We had two placeholders the last time we talked about this. There was two placeholders, one regarding Town Hill Engineering Design, so the CPC did vote to move forward with that. We will be engaging with the board to see, to start understanding a scope of our work and the vision for Town Hill. And there was a placeholder for the Campbell Trail. They were going to push that to the next, next town meeting. But the other articles revolve around affordable housing, Mirror Lake Phase II settlement analysis, Freeman and Kennedy projects to restore field lighting, as well as expansion of irrigation system, and at Pond Street, the creation of three pickleball courts. Next one is King Philip. It's allowing them to create a stabilization fund for forward-thinking, planning of projects in the future. There's no allocation of funds with this article. The next is our planning and zoning articles, which includes the amendment to the inclusionary bylaw, MBTA Commuse Zoning Bylaw, as well as the Schedule of Uses Regulation Amendment. And then we have a street acceptance for Ariana Lane. We have a bylaw regarding the temporary repairs on private ways that we've talked about previously. And then we have two articles that have sort of been dictated to us, dictated, worked with DEP regarding our permit. And the only thing with that article, and I, I think we have alignment, we're going to keep them as two separate articles, but there was potentially merging them, I think we'll keep it as two separate articles. But that is what the warrant looks like at the moment. The placeholder for school, I do have to say this, it was requested me say this, the placeholder that the schools had asked for in terms of their project, they asked for it to be removed. There is a school committee meeting this evening. If the committee felt like, based on the report that they got from the demographer, they would vote to request that the select board consider adding that article to the warrant, but they did ask to remove the placeholder of that article. And that's high-level, the warrant. I don't know if there's any other ones other than the, the special act that you have any specific questions about. I know Rich is going to come back to you and talk about zoning, because we should talk about that again, and that's a pretty expansive one.
Yep.
I do want Tom and Andrew, who's associate, to talk about the special act. Is there anything else that the board may want to dive into?
Given that we're going to be going through the department-by-department budget discussions, I don't really feel the need to dive into anything from that perspective. We have Rich coming back, like you had said, to talk to us about the big items surrounding the overlay districts that we're going to be putting in, so look forward to that. I think the only one on my list would be Article 15 from Tom, so unless somebody from the board has another request.
That sounds great.
Thank you. Tom and Andrew?
Thank you, Justin. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Tom Harrington, Town Council, and with me is my associate and budding sewer expert, Andrew Bettinelli. So Andrew can take you through the, what we're actually trying to accomplish with this special act, kind of from a high-level perspective. We passed the sewer bylaw a little more than 12 months ago, or I'm sorry, we got the special act to operate a sewer district a little more than 12 months ago, and so, so that was our first step, and this step is now fine-tuning and giving us some more authority to operate the district more efficiently. But with that, Andrew, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Tom. Good evening, members of the board. The special act that we're proposing gives the town additional collection remedies for sewer users that are, pardon me, for property owners with reserved capacity in the sewer that aren't currently connected. Under Chapter 83, you can collect with a municipal lien against persons using the sewer, so this is going to allow us to bill based on reserved capacity and then also have the same collection remedies that we would have available to us as if they were a sewer user. That's how the district was set up. There are several agreements that were executed between the constructor of the plant and several of the property owners. For the property owners that are currently connected, we have the ability to bill them and collect under Chapter 83, so this is just extending that same ability to collect and bill under Chapter 83 based on reserved capacity and not just use.
It's pretty clear to me. Any questions, Jim?
No, I'm all for it.
Me too. That's why we went this way in the first place, so it sounds good to me.
Yeah, this, this seems to be resolving a major roadblock that we had in the operations and management of the incoming funds associated to the sewer district, so would be very eager to see this behind us and be able to move forward with what the future looks like for that arrangement. Seeing as how we don't have any other questions on articles, Justin, was there anything else you wanted to note?
Nope. I would just note, we're asking for the board if they vote to, to execute the warrant, that they do it with a condition that we've done typically, upon final review, edit by Town Council. It will be small grammar changes, if anything. Nothing substantive, no article changes.
Very good. So to that end, I would take a motion to execute with the parameter Justin just noted.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we have an executed warrant, Justin. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Tom. Have a good night. Our next item this evening is to vote to approve the use of Town Hill and a parade route for Norfolk's Memorial Day celebration on Monday, May 27, 2024. Justin, anything else for us to know?
Nothing really. This is an annual event. The board's well aware of it. We did speak with our public safety, and there are no concerns, and in particular, the chief highlighted the, the streets that we proposed closing our Main Street and a small section of Union Street by Town Hill near the end of the event, but nothing really different from what we typically do.
Thank you. Jim, any questions?
No.
Anita?
No questions.
Just very much looking forward to this, one of the biggest community events of the year for us. So I would then take a motion to approve and to authorize the road closures.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is a unanimous vote. Thank you. Our next item this evening is to vote to approve the following road events. We have Connor's Walk on September 20, 2024 at 2:00 PM, and we also have the Norfolk Police Fire and Recreation 5K for Autism on April 28, 2024, from 7:45 AM to noon. Justin, anything else for the board on this one?
Uh, no, and within the packet, you have the details regarding each of these events. Public safety isn't in concern. They are working through the details of the police detail logistics, so I do want the board to know that. So ultimately, if you approve, it should be subject to final public safety review and receipt of all the documents and fees.
Well, you have a little bit of time before these events, so I think we're okay with that. Any questions, Jim?
No.
Questions, Anita?
No questions.
In that case, I will take a motion to approve both, both events, subject to final public safety review and receipt of all pertinent documentation.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. And our last action item this evening is to vote to approve the use of Town Hill for Discovery Day on September 21, 2024, from 11:00 AM until 7:00 PM, with a rain date of September 22, 2024. Justin?
Same situation as the previous event. Public safety has no concerns. I would just make the vote if the board proceeds contingent upon what we said for the last item.
Thank you, sir. Anita, any questions?
No questions.
Jim?
No.
So we talked about the, the mainstays that are big events for our community. This one is slowly growing in popularity. There was a great turnout last time for our small businesses and the introduction to the community over there on Town Hill. So looking forward to this event continuing to grow as well. With that, I will take a motion to approve the use of Town Hill, subject to the final public safety review and receipt of all pertinent documentation and fees.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous as well. And that concludes our action items for the evening. Now we move on to our discussion items. Our first one is going to be a review of our financial forecast. Justin?
Yes. Just for context for the board, the town secured community compact grant funding, and part of that community compact grant funding was to fund the development of a financial forecast for the town. So Todd Lindmark, our finance director, and Anthony Teresi from the Collins Center have worked hand-in-hand developing a financial forecast tool. So Anthony will do a presentation. I would just say for the board and for the public, what we intend to do with this now is moving forward, this is a living, you know, tool that we'll utilize. This will kickstart our budget process in the future. This will be the first step. I'm glad, appreciative of the work that Todd and Anthony did for this, on this project, and I will toss it to Todd and Anthony.
Please come join us, gentlemen. How are you doing this evening?
Fantastic.
Great. The mic is yours. Please take it away.
Welcome. So I just want to do a quick intro. This is Anthony Teresi. Met him a few months back. Been working with him in his office, developing the financial forecast that we're going to be going over. Please keep in mind, the financial forecast is a tool. It's based on a lot of assumptions. In the complete package you have, there's about 17 pages or so of all the data that was utilized, both for the revenues, the expenses, both the state monies, things of that sort. So again, we're trying to take information that we have, look at historically, we had a fiscal year '23, '24. We've also included the updated information for budget fiscal year '25, and then started to extrapolate that out for '26, '27, '28, '29, and then come December, you'll get to see fiscal year '30 in there. And then the numbers are all going to change anyways. So with that, I'll let Anthony kind of go through his presentation, and obviously at the end, if there's any questions, be happy to adjust them as best we can.
Thanks, Todd.
Great, thank you. My name is Anthony Teresi. I apologize for having to postpone a previous session, but I had some personal issues come up. Just briefly to, to set up what I'd like to go through, and it'll be very brief, to explain the Ed Collins Center. The Ed Collins Center is located in University of Massachusetts, Boston. It's actually a state, state agency, and it provides consulting services to Massachusetts cities and towns and state agencies over a really broad area of municipal government. My, my group deals with financial issues. The group is made up of a number of retirees, of which I am one. I have, I think this May will be my 50th year in local government, and my whole career has been in, has been in local government. I did retire about 10 years ago, and I was really happy to be able to continue service to cities and towns, and I was especially pleased to hear you recognize the efforts of so many public employees. It's, believe me, it's a, it's not an easy job, and to keep up at it is, is a great sense of service. This, this project was funded by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under a program called the Community Compact Grant for Best Practices. Again, the program itself has a number of different areas they fund. You applied and were successful to fund this specific project, which dealt with developing a financial forecast model, and then we're also providing kind of a user manual, a narrative on what all these different things mean. The other issue I mentioned was that no cost, no cost to the town, so there's no, there's no cost sharing. It was strictly a state grant. I want to talk a little bit about the benefits of financial forecasting, and then a very brief overview of, of the model. As Todd mentioned, he's provided the board with, with the, the details, and I just want to, I'll give a high-level overview of that, and then we'll end with, if you have any questions and answers. So, you know, why, why a financial forecast? And even before I get into this, I have to mention that, you know, Todd mentioned to me that he just had a phone call with S&amp;P, your, your bond rating outfit, and there, I assume, he mentioned to me that they're very pleased that you have this, this tool. Now, I, we call it a model, but it's really a tool, because it's not, it's not a model that, that's built and can't be adjusted. It's a tool to run a lot of different iterations. So first, it, you know, it allows the officials, whether it's internal and, and the elected board, to annually review and, and make adjustment to budgetary changes, and looking at commitments you may not know about now, but you may know about in the future, and then needs. I do want to stress that, that the model we developed is a baseline model. So we, we've assumed that the out-years follow kind of your, your, your same service levels and, and staffing levels based upon historical data. So we're, at this point, we're developing that, that framework, not making changes in anything that might be coming down the road. The model will allow you to do that as you proceed. It identifies the challenges that the community faces, and perhaps some opportunities to, to implement some, some changes. If a series of, of budgetary policies, while it, it may result in you're looking at some of those policies and say, well, we, we want to adjust some of the policies, or, or create some new policies that will help us in the future. Another benefit that, that is, is often overlooked in, in some communities is a really good five-year capital budget. I'm pleased to say that you, Norfolk, has a, has a very dynamic, well-developed capital budget. As again, I said, that we haven't included that in the forecast, because that's just been submitted to you, but again, as you move forward, you will be able to make those adjustments, whether it's, you know, pay-as-you-go capital item, or a capital item that you'll have to borrow money for, whether it's within Prop 2 and 1/2, you know, you have that funded, but in some cases, you'll have to fund it within the levy, so it would have some impact. And then, what I think is the most interesting, at least from, from, you know, Todd's perspective and the manager's perspective, is as you move forward with, with using the model as a tool, you'll see that there are all, many different areas to, to implement what-if, what-if scenarios, you know, what if there's a change in, in an assessment, what if there's a, a change in, in staffing, what if there's a change in, in some revenue category. So, so that allows us to look at many different scenarios and see the impact of how that might affect the long-term plan. All right. So the forecast has, has many different worksheets in the forecast, and I've simply provided you with, with the, the detail of revenue projection, just so you, you could look at how it's structured, and after this revenue projection, we provide expenditure. But in the revenue projection, and it, it follows your budgetary categories, tax levy, the local receipts, state aid numbers, and free cash, and it identifies all of those, and it provides a projection, basically a straight-line projection percentage at the tail end of that, of that file. So I don't know how... It projects pretty well on the screen. That projection percent, Todd and I worked on those, and those are just, as this one, those are estimates for, for the five-year plan. The, a particular note, when we get to the end of this, is to see that these projections are utilized to present, Todd's presented a balanced fiscal 2025 budget. So the revenue projection is, is this one worksheet, but it's backed up by a number of other worksheets in the, in the big file, Excel file that we send to the town. The next section is the expenditure projections. And again, this is based upon your specific levels of appropriation. We, we, at the Collins Center, we do not present communities with a kind of a canned, excuse me, a canned revenue expenditure forecast. We, we design them to, to be specific to the community, and it fits in with what you're, what you're used to looking at, and then what town meeting might be used to looking at. So we, we have all the, your general fund categories here. We break it down on this worksheet by salaries and expenses. The salary lines here are backed up by another Excel spreadsheet that is used to project estimated COLAs, and you have what's called a step system in your pay plan, where people, depending upon tenure, may move up, the addition of COLA may move up a step. So that's, that spreadsheet, again, is, comes in very valuable when you're doing, you know, what-if scenarios, and some instances, you know, collective bargaining also. And it all rolls in to this, this forecast. We use, we, we deal with your fixed costs, it's called your employee benefits, your liability insurance, your debt service, state assessments. So we try to capture every, every type of general fund expenditure the town has. This model was not developed to include your enterprise funds. Now, it certainly can be expanded. Typically, communities develop a separate enterprise fund model, because it's, the enterprise funds operate a lot differently than, than general fund, since so much of it is rate-driven, too, so that enters into a much, you know, much longer discussion about what you may have to do with rates to, to meet the expenses. Though that's not part of this, but, but you can certainly use a similar approach on, on water and sewer, water and wastewater enterprise. The last page in my presentation is really just the summary. So it takes, excuse me, the detail that we see in general fund revenues on the previous slides, and the details we saw in general fund expenditures, and it rolls them up just to, to give a higher-level view of what the projection looks like, combining revenues and expenses, and then kind of a forecast of what the bottom line is. Now, don't, don't be surprised when you see the annual deficit. You know, fiscal '25... You know, fiscal '25 is, at this point, the model's balanced and Todd is submitting a balanced budget. You're still working through that process. '26, '27, '28, '29, as I said, are baseline projections. As you make decisions both in this annual budget and decisions in the future, that bottom line changes. Most communities are showing trends that are very similar to this. Because most communities are, you know, face, unless there's a new revenue source, they're certainly facing constraints in, in dealing with kind of your level service budget and dealing with the revenues. So each year that would, that would be adjusted and you recognize that you cannot have an unbalanced budget. So regardless of what the numbers show in the future, each year that Todd and the manager present a budget, it has to be balanced, or at least balanced by the time you submit the tax recap. So even at the point of town meeting, it may, may be out of balance, but there are things that occur subsequent to that before the tax rate is set in, I don't know, here it's November or December anyway. So next December, next November of '24 and December of '24, you'll be dealing with kind of the final wrap-up of that. So that's a kind of a high-level overview. As Todd mentioned, there are a number of other worksheets behind, behind this. I think if you view it as a, as a tool rather than an engraved in granite, you know, document, it would be, it should be very helpful. And I'll be happy to answer, answer any questions and I'll have an ongoing relationship with Todd for a little while anyway, as we wrap up the final deliverables.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. You know, I have questions about individual data points in here and definition of where it's coming from, but I'm sure that that's something that we can work through outside of this forum. I think that my high-level question for you was centered around, you know, one of the benefits we saw coming out of this was the ability to be able to look further down the road in terms of what the impacts of some of the expenditures or some of the revenue opportunities would be on our future budgets and be able to make decisions looking further than just the next year and the future. Secondary to that, though, I had also had aspirations of being able to highlight some benchmarking compared to what other communities were looking at when they complete forecasts like this. So we could identify how we fall, like you had briefly touched on it, about other communities are kind of looking at the same thing when you're looking at, you know, fiscal years '27 through '29. Would we have the ability to compare against other communities and highlight either growth percentages in certain line items or trends that we're not identifying as part of our process in comparison to those communities? Or is that something that kind of goes away once we have this handed over to us to use internally?
Yeah, I mean, we'd be done with, with our project when we hand this over. There is a wealth of data that exists on something called the Municipal Data Bank. It's run by the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services. And it has a significant amount of data on new growth for every community, local receipts for every community, tax. So the amount of information, and Todd's very familiar with that, is, is there. The comparability issue, if you want to see how, what communities are doing with their forecast, the, also on the Division of Local Services website, there is a section that's called.
Best Practices.
Yeah, Community Compact Best Practices. And when you drill down on that, it'll actually list all of these projects. So you should be able to say, well, you know, because I think your neighbor, we just did one for your, for one of your neighboring towns about a year ago. I'm sorry, I can't recall who it was, but that would be on the website. So you can, you can see their model and their assumptions. But so many of, of what actually happens is unique. New growth, for example, you can't really look at.
Yeah, you never get to get apples to apples, but it is pretty directional to understand if there is an identified trend among communities.
The trend is, and is available through, through the MMA, you know, what a community's giving in COLAs. I mean, you know, collective bargaining, things like that. So there are good sources of data. That's, that would be, I mean, if you wanted us to get involved in that, that would be, we'd have to scope out a different project.
Interesting. All right, thank you.
But I should say the, the Community Compact Grant, I think, is going to open for another round of funding in August.
Yes.
If it goes through the legislature, but it sounds pretty good that it's going to go through. And I can tell you, it's been extremely valuable to, to a lot of towns and even cities because one, you know, it's free and, and there's, there are a lot of, you know, communities have already done this that you can, can look at.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anita?
I had a completely random logistical question. Does this connect with ClearGov? Like, I know that the ClearGov data and do they, and this tool, do those, I don't know why this is bouncing in my brain, but do they have the same, or do you enter the data here and then you entered the data in the pool? Are they separate?
It's ladder. So it's double entry because this is an Excel spreadsheet utilized for the tool. And then ClearGov is an online utilization for the operational budget, you know, for this year. You know, when we set up the budget for next year, in December, we'll have conversations, hey, here's a forecast, these are where we think the trends are, these are the preliminary numbers. Hey, we're out of WAC $800,000 or whatever the number is. Then we have that process to say, okay, here. And then revenues, what's the expectation? Is there, things going to be changing? Is there mitigation? You know, we'll have better information as we go through. But there's no tie-in between the two. The information will be available. We'll have, similar to what we do with the plan that we have for capital expenditures, the budget that we have up, posted on the website. And we'll be putting the operational budget up there and then we'll also have the financial forecast up there. And as we develop them each time, those just get updated annually with the newest information.
Thank you. And then going back to the what-ifs that you're talking about, this would allow us in the, in the process of balancing the budget to say, if we made this decision, what would be the impact of this? What would be the impact of that decision?
Yep.
Thank you. And then when you were, when you were filling in all the, the data for the formulas, was there anything that jumped out at you that surprised you? Were there, were there surprises?
No surprises.
No surprises? No surprises. And you talked about opportunities. Were there opportunities that jumped out at you?
We talked briefly about that and, and nothing jumped out right, right now.
All right. Thank you.
As we go through the budgeting process and as we've done this year, we've made sure each of the departments go back, check their fees for their departments inside of us so that we're consistent with the area as well as, you know, keeping up with the time. So I think, you know, that just has to be an annual process.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you. It's really valuable and I look forward to diving in more.
Well, it's been a pleasure working with, with Justin and Pat and Todd.
Jim, questions here?
A couple of comments. I've seen tools like this before and I really like this one. You said that this is a tool, not a model, and a distinct difference. And most of the ones I've seen have been models. And so they're more linear in nature and you don't have the ability to play with it and you don't have the ability to do really investment versus return kind of forecasting. That's what I really like about this model, is that you're talking about other communities. This gives us the opportunity that if we invest in this and we, and we get extra turn, how does that play out over a five-year forecast? That's an invaluable tool, in my opinion, because it helps us in making business decisions on where to put our investments, what other sources of revenues or what types of returns we can get for those kinds of investments. That's what I really like about this tool. So I'm, I'm excited about it because I, when I first got into this a little bit, I was afraid it was more linear and that it was going to be more of a model process. This is a tool, at least as I see it and read through it. So I really like it a lot.
So we gave you about a five-page summary and then there's about 12 more pages behind it, which has all the different details that play into those summary pages.
Yeah, but when you talk about planning and you sit down, whether it's, even departments can utilize this very effectively. You know, I mean, Blair can look at this and say, well, if I do this and I can get extra turn, how does that play out over a five-year model? That's a very invaluable tool, a very valuable tool, I should say. And so, yeah, I like it a lot. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Justin, anything else?
Nope. I just appreciate the effort, Andrew.
We'll have some fun with this.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
So Todd, what does the cadence look like for reviewing this? Is this something that we would ever have brought to us when updates are made on an annual basis? Would this be part of our quarterly forecast updates?
This will be part of your discussions in late November, early December, prior to the budget setting process. So typically I send a memo out first part of January for the departments to do their budget entries and updates. And then February, I have all that information, start entering it, so that's all within ClearGov. And then early February, we start having meetings with the department heads at that process. But for the financial forecast, we would, you know, Justin and I would sit down probably October, November, start to put these together so that when we have a discussion with you guys, you know, where do we want to go with this? You'll have better information at that point.
So as part of annual budget review process, that'd be one of the reference documents that we would use to support whatever's being proposed. Would we also be leveraging this for new debt exclusion proposals to highlight what impacts would be moving forward?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Good.
Mr. Chair, I would just add, Todd's absolutely right. I would just add that, you know, what I, what we had talked about and what I envision is in December, coming to the board and specifically talking about this, but also sharing this information with the department heads as we give them the budget memo and the guideline for the budget. So that way, that information's transparent, not only for departments, but the public as well. But, you know, it is a shift in our budget schedule because we would, it's a bit on Todd too, because we're going to have to work to do it, but in December, let's start the budget kickoff now instead of a little bit in the new year. But, yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Todd.
Sure.
And thank you very much once again, Anthony. Appreciate it. All right. Our next item this evening is the first of our budget reviews, the one that is going to blow everybody away and set a bar very high for the rest of them. Sarah from the library will be coming to share her budget. So please come and join us. Sarah, how are you doing this evening?
Good, how are you?
Fantastic. Thank you.
Good to see you.
I'm sorry to jump over you there, Justin. Get right ahead if you want to lead us in.
No, it's fine. I just want to, I want to put context here for the board. One of the, part of our select board goals and town administrative goals discussions was to hear from more of our department heads on a regular basis. So you heard from Richa, your previous meeting, we're going to go through every department. We have a schedule for every department to give a high-level discussion of their budget. You know, if there's any specific budget questions you may have, you can speak with obviously the department head and ask him those questions. But also told, when we spoke with this, with department heads, speaking about, you know, challenges, what they're doing or opportunities for the future, et cetera. So it's kind of a high level, trying to meld in those goals that we talked about. So there's no, I don't, none of our departments have a PowerPoint or anything. It's more of a, give a brief introduction if the board has questions and help them know.
So the budget that I've been working with Justin on, our final one, is a 1.2%, 3% increase. We are requesting to backfill a children's librarian position that has been vacant for a few years. The reason we are pushing for it so hard this year is because we have some savings for retirement that happened last year. And so the impact is not great to our budget currently. But the impact to having the children's librarian will be great because there's so many programs that only one person can hold. We do have a senior youth services librarian right now. She is full-time, but I'm really afraid she's going to burn out. She has great ideas, but she really needs the support. The children's department at the library is one of the busiest in the whole library. Happy to give you some stats on that if you'd like. But yeah, did you have any specific questions after reviewing the numbers? Did they get the numbers, Justin?
They did.
Okay.
So as one of the main contributors to the volume of children's usage in the library, first and foremost, I just want to say what an incredible job everybody does there.
Thank you.
I mean, it's an incredible resource for our community. The kids love going there. And, you know, especially during the times of need, I think back to the storm, when people were looking for heat and electricity, the library was there, front and center, ready to help everybody. So thank you so much for everything that you and the rest of the team do there.
Thank you. So just to throw some numbers at you that you might not have in front of you. Our first year without a children's librarian was FY '22, so right towards the tail end of COVID. And we were able to do 385 programs. The next year, we were closed for three months, but we were still able to do 454, which is a great number. We were closed for the flood, if you don't remember, the repairs and stuff like that. The year of the floods. As of the beginning of February, Allison, our Youth Services Department head, has already run 315 programs. And I feel so bad, she's so enthusiastic, but saying no just to protect her, like sort of mental health with working, because it's a high burnout job, has been important. And I just want to get us back up to the numbers that we were before COVID, when we had the children's librarian. Before COVID, with the children's librarian, we were running 600, 700 programs a year. And it's, we've had to decrease it a lot. We have working families who are asking for evening and weekend programming that we would love to provide and we've tried to do that more. But with it being one person, you can't ask them to work six days a week, twenty, like every single month of the year. And just some of the numbers that we've brought into the town, we do do passports, as I'm sure some of you are aware. This is going to be our biggest year ever with passports. Last year, we brought in $28,000 and this year, as of just the middle of this month, we're already at $21,000. So it is a great service and the money does go to the town. That is, that is purely the town's money. We do keep a small percentage for postage and things like that, but that $21,000 number is everything that we've deposited with the town so far. So given that and the savings, that's why we're really pushing for the children's librarian position to be backfilled.
You guys do great work.
Thank you.
I can't say enough good things about our library. I remember when we first moved here, we had like the highest turnover, the highest library use per capita of any city and I was very proud of that that was my town and we loved the library. I think that we don't have any questions about the children's librarian. We think it's awesome. I wish we could afford to do more.
Yeah, and one compromise that Justin and I did come up with was we won't have them start immediately at the beginning of fiscal year. We will have them start in January. So let's save some money for next fiscal year.
Because volume doesn't typically pick up until once the end of the summer starts to roll around, right?
Unfortunately, summer is our busiest time.
Oh, really?
But we all did meet as a team and we've decided we can do one more summer and we'll all just pitch in. Having the children's librarian also will give us more adult programming because our, all of our adult programmers, me included, have been pitching in with the kids' programs just to keep those going and the volume that people expect.
Interesting. I was way off. Wow. Jim, any other questions or comments?
Our library is alive and well.
It is? It is? Yeah, we're back to pre-COVID numbers, which is great.
And a 1.32% year-over-year increase. Nobody's going to argue with that. So thank you for continuing to do more with us. It's awesome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure. Sarah goes, I just want to add one other thing that Sarah, in terms of a budget, because as you hear from some of our other departments, this is a challenging budget because we still haven't restored some of the positions we removed. But one other thing that we did to try and give you the proposal to consider adding this position is that there was, starting the position in January, but also state aid was covering some expenses that are typically in the operating budget. Sarah came up with some other ways, creative ways to bring that expenditure down and commit for a couple of years to do that as well, to mitigate the cost. So I do think that's important for the board to know that information as well.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right. Our next budget review will be DPW, Blair.
[laughing].
1.32%. You got it?
Yes. Good evening. I don't know where to begin. I guess I will start with, this has been an extremely challenging year for the budget. On multiple, with multiple facets, looking at, as you're probably well aware, 50, roughly 50% of the expenses in Public Works are labor-related. And 50% obviously are related to materials and supplies. That being said, you know, you can have all the money that you need for expenses, but if you don't have the people to do it, that's a real problem. Last year, about this time, we decided collectively to freeze a couple of positions that were open at the time. One of those was in grounds and one of those was in highway. Over the past year, and I'm sure Justin can certainly testify to this, those open spots have, have certainly had repercussions. We've found ways to do the best we could, but, you know, that's a collective 80 hours a week that are missing from the labor pool, which in a small town like this, you know, with only two or three guys in each division, adds up quickly, so.
Especially when it rains the whole summer.
Yes, and that doesn't help, the weather doesn't help because, you know, even if everything is perfect, you know, you only end up with 40 hours per person out there. If it rains, now you're, you're down 20% right out of the gate if you lose a day. So, and we've had plenty of weeks like that. So that being said, you know, we really went through the expense side. So that being said, you know, we really went through the expense side here because I wanted to, and I, and Justin and I have had multiple conversations about trying to reinstate one of the positions, the grounds position, which certainly looking at the overall budget is a sizable request, and I'm well aware of that. So, you know, we really went through the expense side to try to offset a lot of that, and overall came in with about a 0.11% increase. So I thought that, given the state of, of the economy and where we're at, I thought that less than 1% was formidable, all things considered. With that being said, though, we did look at some departments more heavier than others. Transfer is always one that, that comes up year after year. I did do a lot of research into what similar-sized towns do in this regard and their expenses, and a lot of public feedback from residents. And so I do have some recommendations that I would like to have the board consider tonight with regards to changing a few of them. A lot of them are related to materials that we no longer get money for, that, that we're charged for. A lot of them, a lot of those prices have gone up just recently, and maybe it will eventually pay off here, but this month is the first month in a year that I've seen more than half of the materials that we turn in that we maybe get a rebate for. This is the first time in a very long time where the, the majority of them haven't been a charge. They've been, so from that regard, maybe there's some hope down the road here, but I have, one month doesn't make a trend. So that's why I've asked the board to consider some, some rate increases. And those are in your packet, and I certainly have, you could certainly explain them. I can go through them one by one if you'd like, or answer questions going forward. But that was, overall, that's really where the majority of, of the onus came from the, from scrutinizing the overall budget. And I have, do you have any questions? Or no, please?
Well, first and foremost, thank you for the transparency and the efforts in being able to balance the ax, task, to be able to add the other position. It would have been, you know, feasible for us to come in and say, we need to add the position, and we kept everything else flat. But the effort to be able to offload some of the impact is appreciated. I've said it before, there are a few departments where changes to your budget are felt so much within the community and are so front and center within the community. So like you said, if we, you know, cut a position down or remove some hours from our own role, you know, there's phone calls for that.
Absolutely.
They come in and it's felt downstream. So trying to find that balance is always difficult. You know, from my perspective, Blair, I think my only question was centered around an update on the view of the transfer station. I know that we quarterly have been reviewing the returns and the, the financial analysis, but from your perspective, what does the future look like for the transfer station with the changes that have been put in place already?
I think, in all honesty, as I continue to look at the trends, it is a service to the town. At the end of the day, we have about 1,500 memberships every year. So it is widely used. Anyone who's been there on a Saturday knows that, you know, it is fairly steady on, on a Wednesday or Saturday. That being said, this is the first month in a very long time where the majority of products that we recycle are, are, you know, giving us a return. And, and even then, it's not much of a return, but at least it's, it's, you know, it's not a negative. I don't see a bright future for recycling, unfortunately. There's just nowhere for it to go. The expense outweighs, you know, outweighs the uses. And within the next five years will be crucial to that market as to whether or not recycling continues to be a thing or whether or not the costs just outweigh it overall. I mean, at the end of the day, when expenses continue to climb, you know, we already have quite a few expenses as it is, and we try to minimize those expenses as best we can. But, you know, mattresses are a great example of that. You know, it's a new item to recycle. There is, there's certainly an expense for everyone to do that. We break even with that, so there's no expense to the town. But again, it's difficult for people to move mattresses. It's not a, it's not an easy thing to do. We pick a few every year off the side of the road for people that don't want to pay, you know, the recycling fee. So the recycling market is fluided from year to year, from month to month. I mean, I get a, I get a sheet on the first of every month from all of the vendors that we use. Sometimes that shows up as a rebate, sometimes it shows up as a charge.
May I ask a question about that? Is that because of the volume that we're contributing or because of the market?
Because of the market.
Because of the market.
Yeah. The market drives, drives all of it. And it's surprise, and it is surprising. Over the last year, I literally see it every month, I track it every month. And as I said, this is the first month in a year where more than 50% are rebates. Now, we'll see if that, maybe that's because we're getting into spring, that could be seasonal, that could be weather-related, that could be fuel-related. I have no idea exactly how that's going to play out, but as the months go forward here and we get into spring and summer, we'll see how that trend continues. If it does, then it looks favorable, and, but like I said before, one, one month does not a trend to make, so.
Well, I, I thank you for giving it the office, but I think DPW has been giving it the office for too long. And I know we can't do much this year, but I hope in the very near future, if not next year, that we begin to put some money back into DPW. You are short-staffed. You do an incredible amount of work with a very limited opportunity of people, and so I view your budget as one of the ones that we've consistently underfunded. And probably all of our budgets are underfunded in terms of what the logical needs are, but you, you have been more of a focus in that regard. And I, I've wondered about the recycling. You've answered my question for me, but I've wondered where that was headed because it seems to be other areas as well. I'm familiar with Down and Dennis in their operation, which by the way is enormous. The thing is huge. You know, they have 60,000 people in the summertime.
Sure.
That have a lot of rubbish, so to speak. But it's a big revenue maker, and your fees are considerably lower than what they charge, I can tell you.
Yes. And that's why I've, I've asked the board to consider raising some of them. And with, with the one caveat there being the additional decal I would like to reduce.
I saw that, yeah.
And the reasoning behind reducing the additional decal is I would like to encourage people to buy an additional decal as opposed to trying to find ones that, that should exist but don't.
And you're being gentle on the seniors again.
Yes. Absolutely.
Yeah.
And the seniors, seniors make up the majority, the majority of our members, so.
I know. So, Mr. Chairman, is it, are we, or, I'll ask you, are we looking to make a motion to approve this new vote rate change this evening?
I don't believe we need to.
I don't think it was not, this wasn't down as an action item.
Yeah.
No. What we would like, what we wanted to discuss with you first, we'll put it on the next agenda to take a vote on it.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any, do you have any other questions?
No.
Nope.
All right. So I got to ask you two things.
Yes, sir.
The first one is street signs. You know, we went through a long process about street signs previously, and far be it for me to want to bring up something contentious at nearly eight o'clock at night. But what does the plan look like for a potential transition or a proposal to be brought before the board again to reconsider what that go-forward plan looks like?
So the, obviously from the discussions we've had in the past, we are all well aware that the existing street signs, as much as we may all love them, are not compliant. Essentially, the onus behind that is MUTCD, you know, shows that, what a street sign should look like, and someone from California visiting Norfolk should know what a street sign looks like when they come into our town to figure out where they're going. Most of us here know where we are, hence the street signs. So as we have been replacing a few of them, as they have either been in accidents or have rotted away, I have replaced them with MUTCD-compliant signage. I would have had to spend that money either way in order to facilitate that. So I felt it was in the town's best interest to spend it wisely on something that might not rot away in a few years. I have, those signs have been green, which is a fairly standard sign with a Norfolk seal on it. And they should, they should have a service life well over 20 years. So I think that as we move forward, they keep us out of a liability problem should anyone ever hit one and get into an accident. They're on, they're all breakaways, so if someone hits one, they don't cause more trouble than they are. And they are less, about 50% less money than the white post. So they're economical.
And so at this point, there is no large-scale transition plan in place?
Correct.
It's really just as needed, we're replacing with the compliance signs?
Correct. We did price that out to replace, I believe, off the top of my head, there's over 400 in town.
Mm-hmm.
And we did price that out in order to change them all out would be about $80,000. And that was, that's a moving number, but the last time we looked at that, that was roughly the, the number, about a year ago.
Gotcha.
Walter Byron had asked me a bunch of those questions, so that's, we came up with that number.
Yeah. Good. All right. Thank you. My last question, you know, there's three things that we're sure we're going to be asked at town meeting, right? One of them is always, what is the maintenance for the cobblestones and the roundabouts looking like? Do we have any update to our approach associated to the maintenance of those?
So maintenance for the cobblestones, I talk to a lot of residents regarding the cobblestones every year. It is, there are people that love them, people that hate them, a little bit of both. The issue with cobblestones, they are not a smooth enough surface, so they get into an ADA compliance problem. They are expensive to maintain. Every time something has to be reset, we have a couple that are inherently troublesome because of the heavy traffic that goes through town on a repeated basis. We do have a fair amount of heavy truck traffic that rolls up 115 every day, and those seem to be the ones that we have the most trouble with. We did try removing one in front of Walgreens to, as a pilot, to see how that was going to react, because there is a lot of construction underneath. When those were put in, they were put in on cement slabs that are reinforced underneath, which is part of the problem with the design of them in the first place. Water gets down in between them once they crack and then has nowhere to go because they're concrete underneath. So there's some engineering that has to be done with there. In front of Walgreens, we did redo that one crosswalk, and it's holding together pretty well. So I don't want to put forth any plans to rip them all out and redo them at this point, but within the next year or so, we're going to, as we work our way through the sewer discussion, and we figure out what we're going to do downtown, and that's why I haven't repaved downtown either, was because we're waiting to kind of figure out where.
The potential for tearing it up anyway, yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to spend, I don't want to spend valuable money on downtown and then end up ripping it all out to put a sewer main up through, so.
I appreciate the foresight. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm hoping to, and so we'll cross that bridge with the crosswalks when we redo the down center. This year, we are planning on a substantial amount of Rockwood Road to be resurfaced. We milled and paved as part of our ongoing plan here, as well as some other projects. But crosswalks have yet to be determined. We'll see how that goes. That's an ongoing issue. Hopefully not forever, but.
Don't guarantee it.
Yeah, at the moment, at the moment, it's certainly a hot-button issue on any given day.
Well, I appreciate the insight again. Thank you so much. Jim, any other questions?
No, I was going to bring up the signs, but I didn't have the nerve to do it, so.
This is my last review, so I'm getting everything out today.
Well, but I, I am, I know they're quaint. I know that people find them, oh, it's Norfolk, and I hear this a lot, but they are not functional. You can't read them. People pick them up, put them upside down. Some are just stolen because they need a post for a birdhouse in the backyard. You can't read them at night, and they're dangerous, which you didn't bring up. You know, they're dangerous. When you hit a car and they brake, it comes this way, it doesn't go that way. And so I am an advocate of finding at some point in time to expedite in the process of replacing them, because somebody's going to get hurt. And we think they're quaint. I've had anyone that has come into this town that, you know, for whatever reason has anything to say about it, it isn't pleasant because you can't read them. You can't read them at night, and the maintenance on them is terrible, I would think. Now, you know, you guys all know where you're going, and you all have GPS and this, that, and the other, but still, it's, they're not functional.
They're mutually from another town if they were looking for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So they prefer to go to the other town. They, no, I'm just kidding.
But they're not MUTCD-compliant, and that's.
I know, I know you and I talked about this last year, I think, and I think it was 60,000 then, so obviously the price has gone up.
Yes.
But it is something that I'd like to see us gradually, not too, not too gradually, you know, really start to work on this, because they are dangerous.
And we've been replacing, I would say on average, probably 15 to 20 over the last year. So as the old ones fall down, get hit by plows, whatever the case may be, you know, some of them just rot out.
You're talking about six years before you get through that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
At that pace.
But, baby steps sometimes.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Of course. Do you have anything else?
No. Me too.
Mr. Chairman, I would just add, because you have Blair, and we talked about it at the, the Warren article, you know, obviously the board's aware you have water and wastewater that's included in the DPW, but budget presentation, you have that information there. I know the board is going, you know, we, the board adopted water rates. Sewer rates are our philosophy this year. Again, will be to take another look at this later in the year, and the board can determine, you know, sewer rates then. And then for the long-term vision would be for sewer and water rates to be voted at the same time.
Yeah.
So sewer rates will be considered later in the year.
And that would help out with billing if water and sewer, because one is dependent on the other.
Right.
It would help in the billing cycle, cut down the postage and whatnot, so.
Makes sense.
But the budget's in your packet.
So Rockwood Road is on the list this year, huh?
It is, yes, sir.
All the way to the Millis line?
Right now, I'm looking at Boardman to the Millis line. Where there's some drainage that needs to be dealt with in the area of Fleetwood, so there's a little bit of work to do there.
Good job, Justin. We had a meeting on Monday, and that was one of the topics.
How quick it was.
Both of us had to defer because we didn't know, so we'll come back as heroes. Thank you very much.
My job is to be two steps ahead.
Jim knew it.
But I always am going to say.
Sometimes I'm two steps behind, but it's not for lack of effort. Just ironic, that's all. Thank you.
All right, Blair, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great evening.
Yeah, nice to see you.
You too. All right. Mr. Lindmark, you are up, sir, for our finance budget review. Welcome back.
This will be quick, huh?
Yeah.
So each year, we have to go through the budget process and identify, make sure that, you know, we have enough monies within our anticipated budget. Past couple of years, you know, my department's had some changes in personnel and expenses. Turnbacks have been pretty good. $17,000 last year and 20, almost 40-some thousand previous year. Again, changes in staffing, helped create that opportunity. Each year, budget expenses have to get tighter and tighter. So I'm just always worried for my department, given the constraints that software increases, you know, MUNIS, which is one of our biggest packages, right now I have that budget at almost $60,000. But I had that on another two years at only a 3% increase. So there's been other softwares who have given us pricing. I told a couple of the department heads, I have Amory and Dawn, go back to the vendors, tell them we're up, municipality, you know, 15% increases aren't going to work with us. So a lot of the packages, you know, the people that we deal with on these software items have come back with reduced amounts. So that can, all considered, on the salary side, you know, the increase is 4% for contractual On the salary side, you know, the increase is 4% for contractual obligations in my department. Barring any unforeseen circumstances with the negotiation with the contracts. Hopefully, you know, that ties out to around the 4% range for this year. So, salaries increases at 4, expenses are increasing overall, almost 3,000, just under $3,000. But I've also gotten rid of a couple of line items. One of them was financial consulting, which in years past was a $4,000 line item that I was used for some accountants to come in and help with running the MUNIS and closing the books. But I do all that internally now, so no longer need that monies. And then, the other was for fixed assets, which, again, working with the CPAs that we have now, they're taking that on as part of their procedure for helping us prepare the financial statements for year-end. So, those two items removed. So, again, budget increase on the expenses is a little under 3,000 in total. But with those changes, I anticipate being able to cover the increases on the expenses related primarily to software, some postage. That's pretty much my budget, it's pretty vanilla, 3.77% overall. Again, with the 4% for salaries, big component of my budget is the salaries. It's the biggest component, and then 208,650 on the expenses. Any questions on that?
Need it?
No questions, sounds great, thank you.
I do want to give you a heads-up. So, every five years, we have to go through a full reclassification. We did this four years ago. So, next year, we're going to have to do a full reclassification of the town that requires the assessing department to utilize the services of an outside vendor to help them do a full reclassification of all houses in town. Five years, four years ago, the services that we were able to secure at that time was about $49,000 in total. We anticipate that price to be around that price as well. The contract for the basic services came in at about $1,000 more than what it was last year. We just need to figure out on the ancillary services what we're going to need to utilize. But, just giving you a heads-up, next year, as part of the budget process, whether it's a transfer or part of the budget. We did it as a transfer previously, five years, because there's no reason to build it into the budget to back it out, because I put $50,000 in to then back it out. But, just want to make you aware that that's coming down the pipe for next year.
And that wouldn't necessarily be impacted or be more complex by any of the changes that we made to local zoning in the B1, or anything that we're proposing as part of the overlay? It still stays around that same kind of, okay, perfect. Thank you. I have no other questions. Thank you so much, Todd.
Thank you.
I love your new toy. Did you get the XL itself?
Hmm?
Did you get the XL itself?
Right, that brings us to our illustrious fire department.
I kept looking at that clock, and I said, it can't be later than quarter of eight. What's going on here?
Evening, gentlemen. How are we doing tonight?
Very well.
Started at six.
Doing well, doing well.
That's why I feel so long.
It's quarter to nine.
Oh, it's quarter to nine.
That's why I said, I kept looking, I said, what? That can't be right.
Sometimes time does feel like it stops in the context of these meetings.
It does feel like it stops.
Unfortunately, it happened just as Chief Kenny got up here, so apologies for that, sir.
Chief, how are you?
Doing well, doing well.
Mr. Kelly, nice to see you, sir.
Same here.
So, we want to just give a brief overview of our budget and highlight some of the finer points, and then discuss some of the strategic goals we have and things we've worked with Justin and Todd to try to accomplish and hopefully, you know, save the town money in terms of capital procurement. And, you know, help us out. I think, you know, at this point, the way the budget is, every little bit helps. And, you know, we certainly are willing to do our fair share and put ourselves, you know, get to work, you know, trying to make, make things work and happen good for the town. So, for us, we have about a 1.65% increase. I'm happy to say that's the lowest it's been since I've been here, by far, by a lot. But with that, we were able to maintain our current staffing levels. We did have our executive assistant that, right now, that position is still frozen and will probably just stay that way. 95% of our budget is all contractual obligations and salaries. So, at least very little room for us. We have 5% in expenses. Expenses are pretty much the only thing that I have a little bit of room to kind of work with. And we've been trying to work, we have been working the past couple of years to incrementally increase those so that we don't come back with capital requests, for example, for things like PPE or smaller items of equipment. You know, so, we weren't able to fully do that this year, but we, we still are committed to that end and trying to make sure that those kinds of things or expenses are included in operational expenses moving forward. And with that, I just wanted to go over, you know, the way we budget typically is based off our core programs and services. So, I try to prioritize, you know, based on, based on those things. So, our core programs, obviously, are emergency services. Emergency services, you know, and the next is community risk reduction, and the third is fire administration and support services. So, when we look at those core programs, you know, we're doing, we're doing well in the area of emergency services. You know, I obviously am a little bit biased, but I feel like we're exemplary in that area. I feel like we do a very good job. We've got a great group of men and women to serve the town. And, you know, I think we're doing well in that area. I think the, the areas that we have from our budget, and one of the things that we proposed initially, but we weren't able to make it happen this year, is we do have an area where we're underserved in the community risk reduction area. And I've noticed a trend over the last few years where we're having a growing backlog in some of the, some of the inspection services. So, we obviously have to prioritize, and we make sure we get the building inspections and life safety inspections. Those have to be done, and all of the inspections have to be done. But I have noticed that there's a trend of a backlog in some of our oil burner, oil tanks, some of those things. And I think, or I know, that that is due to the amount or the demand for service. So, our demand for service has increased 11% over the past two years. You know, and incorporated in that is, you know, the plan review, the community risk reduction activities. So, that core program right now, I feel like is, is underserved. And it was one of the areas that, that we wanted to, or that Chief Kelly was going to really work diligently at, especially in our tactical pre-planning of our target hazards. We have those in place, but those, those don't get reviewed as often as I would like them to or updated as often as I would like them to. And one of the things that we've learned during the process and as Deputy Kelly has, has served in his role, is, you know, that's an area that is underserved, and because of the increased call volume and increased demand for services, what we typically had done and what was traditional is the crews would go out and do a lot of these smaller inspections. And, right now, what's happening is, we'll have those scheduled, and the crews can't do it, because they're out on a run, or they've done an ambulance transport or a call. So, we want to try to, you know, address that. And one of the ways we wanted to address that was to propose a second deputy chief that would, his, his primary and his actual sole purpose would be the safe program and community risk, risk reduction. Like I said, the increase in call volume has limited the shift personnel's ability to consistently and regularly perform those community risk reduction activities and to get out and do those. We're making it work, and we will continue to make it work throughout this year. It's just something we wanted to put on the radar as, as something that would be a need that we need in the future. The other advantage to that is, it allows for some upward mobility within the ranks of our personnel, which helps morale. And the other piece is, you know, as we continue to increase call volume, obviously, we have a robust callback system. But with that being said, the demand for our personnel's time and commitments outside of work are increasing as well. So, we're seeing a decrease in the amount of personnel we're getting back on our ambulance recalls, for example, and things of that nature, which puts us, you know, it's not at a point where it is at critical. We evaluated the numbers. We noticed the trend, and we were concerned. So, I did some analysis and really broke it down, and it's not nearly as bad. It's not a scary picture yet, but it is something that's trending in the wrong direction, if you will. So, you know, when we sit together and discuss these things, one of the areas that concerns me for the future is, we're gonna have to address something with staffing, and that second deputy will allow us to do that or be a stopgap, because we would have three operational personnel, so during the day. So, on those days where we don't get a robust recall, I'll have, you know, one of our members promoted to that position that would be in a day position or be able to fill those gaps. The other positive to that too is, is that position isn't eligible for overtime. So, there is actually some savings that would, or small savings, or it would be kind of a wash, because you'd have to hire an extra operational person in order to promote someone out of the union into a deputy position. But, those hours, the hours that we work, you know, I could have that person when I need them as opposed to just a set schedule. You know, obviously, we research the data. We look at our call volume. We look at when our calls occur. We look at our busiest months, days of the week, hours of the day, you know, trying to address that. And that is actually the most economical way to kind of do that stopgap. So, that's one, one thing that we had, that we cut for this year, because it just didn't work with the, with the budget. Another that we looked at is having an EMS lieutenant. I know I brought that up in years past. We discussed, you know, we again discussed it this year. You know, obviously, EMS is the lion's share of what we do. Really, it justifies the means of us existing. It's about 65 to 70% of what we do, and even calls that aren't directly EMS, like, you know, technical rescue, if we're going to a vehicle accident, or, you know, getting a guard out of the prison tower who's injured or something, which we've had to do. But, those still involve EMS. So, we're about 70% of what we do is EMS. And, what we've noticed is, there's been a lot of new mandates, new regulations that are imposed on us as a emergency medical services organization. And, you know, we felt like that, that the responsibility of what currently the EMS coordinator handles is a growing responsibility, and there's a lot more at risk, you know, for that person in that position with the mandated training, mandated licensing and reviews that we go through. You know, we've done a good job, but we noticed the trend that that, that demand and the demands placed on us by OEMS and the Department of Public Health are growing. So, that's an area we wanted to, in essence, put more eggs in that basket and give more oomph to that position, rather than it being a firefighter, which is a stipended position. It would be an actual officer. And when we did the last collective bargaining agreement, we were able to implement a step system which the department never had, which is a great thing for us. It helps a lot with budgeting and being able to forecast. But also, there is a, there is now a step in the system that has a lieutenant in it, which we did not have before, which is good for the department. But, again, that's something else we looked at, but right now's not the right time to pull the trigger on that. But I want to highlight those things, because those are the things we cut and chose to, you know, put aside until another year or until finances, you know, are able to line up so we can accomplish that. The next thing is, for us, expenses, you know, we work with those every year. One area we did cut completely in anticipation of a potential merger with SimRec and the new software package that we, the MEK is supposed to be using. It's a more comprehensive software package, so we did completely cut our IT line, because that software package would incorporate the scheduling, as well as command and control software, as well as AVL and those kind of things that we use day-to-day. So, we were able to cut that line completely. We were able to reduce our PPE line, because we have strategically been able to get some grants. We just received a $19,000 grant for PPE from the state, which we applied for and received. And last year, we actually got an AFG grant for, for some items of PPE, not full sets. But, we were able to cut that line, because we went through and did an inventory. We looked at all of our personnel and made sure that everybody has compliant gear that's not expiring, you know, within these next couple of years. So, the, the number is lower and will allow us to have some money to have an emergency replacement set, but as well as replace the one or two sets that we need to do to keep our, all of our personnel's gear compliant. The, the next portion is just talking about the ambulance. So, strategically, I had talked to Todd and worked with Todd and Justin on the ambulance replacement. We've pushed it back a couple of years. I think, prior to my arrival, it was on every four-year interval. I felt like that was too fast and too much of a burden on the town. I looked at what industry best practices were, and it's about a five-year frontline and five-year reserve. We're five years first out, five years second out. So, about 10 years is what we want. And usually, the hard cutoff for those is about 100,000 miles. And, right now, because of the closure of Norwood, our mileage has exponentially increased. The distance we have to travel is significantly farther. So, now, both of our ambulances are over 100,000 miles. So, we can't really push, keep pushing it off. The other piece that plays into that is the rising cost of everything. I have been just completely bewildered by the increase in cost of our apparatus and what we're facing. There's no, it's not that, you know, the manufacturers are gouging either. Everybody, all the manufacturers are seeing these increases, and they get passed down to us. So, for example, the ambulance we bought in 2018 was $295,000. That included the power load system and a couple of other things to help us. This new ambulance that, that I am, we're proposing or, or going after is gonna be $455,000 for literally almost the exact same vehicle. No bells, no whistles, same power load system, everything, and that's the cost increase we're looking at. Another example, we have the new engine that's coming. That new engine, for example, in 2018 would have been probably 600,000. The engine we purchased, fortunately, we got a stock unit that we were able to customize some. But it, it's coming in at upwards of $800,000. Now, we have some incentives and things built into the way we structure the payments that, that take some of that off. So, we're gonna end up at like 790 when it's all said and done. But that's just what we're looking at in costs. It's just astronomical when I look at it. So, what we did strategically, I wrote a letter of intent pending approval of town meeting to lock us into a stock ambulance unit that locks that price in at 455,000, as opposed to if we ordered the same ambulance today, or we waited, that cost increase on that alone would be $50,000. We'd be, we'd be at about a half a million dollars for an ambulance. So, I know it's not typical to do capital now, but I felt like it was important to get this on the ballot and hopefully get it approved, because it insulates us from that cost increase, which we would incur if we waited until November. The other piece is, if we wait until November, and it gets approved in November, we're gonna be waiting three years. The build time on an ambulance now is between 850 and 900 days. So, even though the ambulance we are looking at, we got information about this particular ambulance, this stock unit, a year ago. It won't be delivered to us until May of 2025. That's how far out things have been. So, the reality is, we won't need the, the money until May to pay for it, May of 2025. But I, we need the approval, so I can, we can stamp it as ours, and somebody else doesn't come gobble it up. Just to give you an example, the company we're going with, Greenwood, has 15 stock units. Every single one is spoken for. And ours is one that is the second that we get approval. It's ours. If we don't get the approval, he has three or four other departments waiting for it. So, that was the reason we put that before you, and it was kind of a last-minute thing, because I wanted to make sure we got in, one, so we could not endure any more price hikes, and, two, wouldn't have to wait two and a half, three years for an ambulance when we need it as soon as possible. We need it now. So.
Can I just interrupt?
Yes.
I think one thing for the board to have context on that. When we were talking about the warrant this evening, I mentioned Article 10, the capital expenditures from borrowing. That would be the article that the chief is talking about the ambulance in. And it would be borrowing, but it would be funded via ambulance billing. So, it's, we're not going to go out for a debt exclusive or anything. When we say ballot, it meant article.
Good man.
Yep, but it would be funded via ambulance billing and the receipts that we get from there. So, we would ban that out, and that's what, and Chief said exactly right. Typically, we wait till November, but because of the pricing, we thought, we discussed this this morning as a team. You know, we thought it was prudent to probably put this for consideration now, rather than waiting and seeing that large cost increase.
Yes.
But, sorry to interrupt.
No, it's no problem. My terminology was on, I don't want to.
You saw all three of us going through the packet like this.
Thank you, thank you for clearing that up.
Is that a five-year ban?
It probably would be a five-year.
And then, you know, we have been responsibly, you know, examining our EMS billing and, you know, responsibly looking at the, we have ProEMS now who works with us on the billing, which has been advantageous for us. Our ambulance receipts have increased over the past few years pretty significantly. Another thing that, since I've been here, that we've done, and I'll take my hat off to. to Deputy Chief Kelly and Marie Simpson, our retired executive assistant, but through their efforts and tireless efforts, you know, over the past three years, we've generated or been able to bring in $123,000, $123,939 to be exact, through a Medicare Medicaid reimbursement program and audit. That was revenue that we had never brought in before and this coming year, we're projected to bring in an additional $42,935.65 through that program as well. It is a fairly rigorous process. They require a lot of data, but, you know, through the efforts of Marie and Deputy Chief Kelly, we, we've secured that. It's been something we will continue to do and continue to pursue. Another thing that we are doing, you know, I talked about our core services. So the initiatives that we have that we really want to move forward with and are doing on a continual basis, investigating opportunities for regionalization or cost sharing initiatives with surrounding municipalities. So we just recently, last year, got a regional grant with the city, with Franklin. That grant for us, the value of that grant was over $320,000. In total, the grant is worth almost a million for all new radios. We will be one of the first departments in the state of Massachusetts, along with Franklin, to have fully NFPA compliant radios, which is a huge safety enhancement. We actually just got the radios delivered today. We had our, some of our onboarding training for some of our folks today. We also have initiated another regional grant opportunity with Rantham. We have, Chief Maria and I have come together to discuss our, you know, response model and our deployment and instead of either one of our towns trying to front the bill for a, you know, million plus or $2 million ladder truck, we did a regional grant together to fund a ladder truck. You know, right now, the, what we've discussed is that we would host the vehicle and staff it, but instead of either one of our towns having to front a $2 million bill on their own, it will be split and the grant itself will take up 1.1 million dollars of that expense. So we felt like that was, again, it makes it a more sustainable and realistic goal. You know, obviously we needed a ladder truck. Both of our ladder trucks are old. Theirs is old and out of service a lot. Ours fortunately is not out of service a lot, but it's old. And, you know, it is, it's definitely time for it to be replaced and, you know, so we've entered into that regional grant. If we're able to get that grant, we will have a 10% match that we will split and then have to either come up with the rest or work with Rantham at alternatives to the apparatus that right now has been selected. The apparatus right now that has been selected was done collaboratively through us, Franklin and Rantham because Franklin did go ahead and purchase the exact same ladder truck, but we want to have that continuity and consistency around our operation. So the goal would be to have the same vehicle, but, you know, costs may drive that to be something different is the reality. But we did go into, enter into that grant. We're excited about the opportunity for it. Hopefully we, we get it. It would really help a lot and be a great benefit to our towns as well as the taxpayers. The other thing we've done, recognizing the need, and this is something that will probably, hopefully eventually be a benefit to the whole town. When I met with Justin and Todd this morning, it was still not a sure thing. Well, we got word at 2:30, we have been include, we have been enrolled and awarded into a pilot program with a company called GovFunds, which allows us and helps us to explore hundreds and hundreds of grants, both private and public. And they will also assist us in reviewing what we write and developing the narrative so that we have the finer points covered and we are more likely to be awarded those grants. That company focuses primarily on fire, police and DPW, but that is, we are in a pilot program, which we get the services for free for six months and to work through one project. So we have a project in mind. We're going to look to equip our new engine that is coming through that instead of asking for capital purchases during, in the fall and hopefully we'll be able to do that. And once we, if we are successful and that pilot program works, we'll have the option when it is done to use those services on a more permanent basis and it, those services will be available to police and DPW. So it's something that could be a great benefit to the town as a whole to help deal with the capital thing so that we can leave those funds available for operational costs or to make our free cash coffers, you know, better and our rainy day funds better. So we're excited about that. We got word at 2:30, actually Deputy Chief Kelly was the first one to see it and I was excited. I think this is a great opportunity for the town and hopefully it, it comes to fruition. So that's where we are with our, with our department. The other piece in our initiatives, we want to try to, you know, recruit and new call firefighters. Currently, we do have three individuals that we are going through the process of evaluating. We have two that have enrolled in EMT school, two young, young men who are seniors in high school, which they've been around, they've been like gym rats, they've done some ride alongs, which is great. They're already learning and picking up on things and we have one gentleman who is currently doing his ride alongs and things seem to be fitting well. So we're trying to rebuild and grow that because fortunately for us, you know, we've been able to hire from the call department, so our numbers have shrunk, but in a good way because we've been able to hire them, you know, some of, you know, we've had, you know, some of our young members that, that were on the call department for a year or two or two years. So they had a two-year interview, so we know what we have. They've already been Norfolkized. They, they already bought into our culture and how we do things here. So that's been a real positive. We look to keep doing that. Like I said, we have three in the queue right now. Hopefully we'll get some more. We'll continue. We're working on a program to do a, an internship or like a, a program with the high school where we can bring students in during their senior year to, you know, explore what we do and come with us during the day and learn some of the concepts and things we do. I've got Captain Hoarth who's working on that with the school system. That should help us recruit and bring more people in. We're excited about that as well. So, you know, things have been rolling and moving right along and that's our, that's our budget for, for this coming year.
Thank you very much for the in-depth view into what contributed to the budget this year as well as the future considerations so that they're on our radar for what's coming down the pike. I had a couple of questions for you. The first one was in relation to the state cutting the community projects funding for the radio repeater system?
Yes.
You had identified earlier that you had just received new radios and you were working through some onboarding with that, but this is separate than that, correct?
Yes. The radio repeater system is the backbone. You know, basically it's the, the infrastructure behind making those radios work and actually we got word today from the, the vendor that is doing that project that they have already built out the racks for that. We have discussed with, with Justin and with Todd, looking at ways strategically make up for that. It ends up being a $22,000 cut. So I'm also discussing with the vendor if there's anything that, you know, can be adjusted or cut or if there's anything that can be recycled, whether it be antenna or cabling, potentially we'll try to do that to save that, you know, and hopefully it's something that I'll have to come back and ask for the capital during November to fix. But the good thing is it's a, it's a fairly long process, like it'll take a while to build out the, the system. So, you know, we hopefully will have the opportunity to, you know, strategically look at ways to, to fix that or to adjust or get that 20, that 22.
22.5.
Yeah, 22.5, yep. So we're, we're aware and we're working diligently to try to correct that or mitigate that loss, you know, so we can still get the repeater project done.
Perfect. Thank you. Next, as we begin to prepare to make our case for prison mitigation funding, one of the things that you provided last year that was incredibly helpful was the stats associated to the trips that you've been taking to the prison and how that had a steady increase while we started to see those funds actually decrease.
Yes.
Going into this next year, have you seen that same trend where calls are continuing to go on the rise?
Yes. So overall, we've had, this year the increase wasn't as big. Like last year, our increase was almost 10%.
Right.
This year, it's about 1.3% increase in call volume, but still the prison accounts for about, you know, 20, 20% of our run volume.
Yeah.
So it is of high demand and, you know, the, the challenging part with that is that the way the prison system does there, even for us on the EMS billing side, like we've, we have responsibly increased, you know, in small intervals every few years, our billing rates to meet what the, we are like, we're right in the middle. We're right in the middle of the road for, and while the prison, that, that hasn't been adjusted since I've been here. And the difficulty with that is we don't have the freedom or the ability to go negotiate that on our own. It's the entire prison system. So we can't go and say, look, you need to, so that part's a little challenging, but it is something that we need to, you know, hopefully discuss and look at, you know, state aid maybe taking the, or being, it being increased to hit that, that where that misses because we do, while it is not a li, not as big a liability when we go to the prison because it's a guaranteed payout versus, you know, we may pick up a transient person or a person driving through town that doesn't have any insurance and we get nothing.
That's a loss.
You know, fortunately for us, the, the demographic in the town we live in, we have very, that's not common for us. We're still, you know, collecting at a pretty high rate, which is important and it helps us offset our budget. And I, I think that, that piece is important. So I do want to continue to explore and I have talked to the superintendent at MCI Norfolk about that, but even with that, his hands are tied. He can't, you know, negotiate with me or just really discuss any particulars about that because it's the whole prison system and whoever they're using, you know, for their medical side. So it is something that's on my radar and I want to, you know, try to, you know, look into and try to explore, but it's just, you know, I don't have the authority or power to do that and neither does the prison superintendent. So it's going to have to come from above, you know.
Well, we'll do our best to get you an advocate into the legislature. Don't worry.
All right. All right.
Our next, my last question for you was obviously all eyes are on the new station being built. Everybody comments on the progress and how great it looks. Just a quick update, are we still on track for completion going into mid to end summer?
Yes. So the, the project is still on target and it is still on budget.
Beautiful.
That is, those are the things that.
That's awesome.
Most important to me is being on track and on budget. So right now, we're still there.
Jim, questions, comments?
No, but I would love to have you back sometime during the summer, if you can find an off day, to get into more of some of the issues that you brought up. Tonight's not the night, but you presented a lot of information there and a lot of the future needs and I'd just love to learn more about it so that we can help you get there.
Absolutely. Anya?
I don't have any questions either. I appreciate the thoughtfulness of the decisions that you're making and your forward lookingness in terms of recognizing what your needs are and how to manage that. And so thank you very much. Thank you.
Very thorough. Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Greatly appreciated. Do you have a question?
I have a comment.
Go right ahead.
A doc to get that thing.
You do. I'm sorry.
Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street, Pondville. And the fire department, the public safety, wonderful people in this town have had an amazing effect on the Whitney family. Most everybody knows that my stepdaughter, Ashley Whitney, who moved in with us 15 years ago, and she will live with us forever, and then my stepson will assume responsibility for her one day. She used to be terribly frightened of fire and police people. They frightened her because of the authority and the uniforms and so forth. We began bringing Ashley down to the fire department. She wanted to visit at the open houses. She wanted to meet people. This was a huge improvement in her social skills, in her learning skills. Ashley's 42 years old, but she's perpetually six is what it amounts to. Sometimes drives me crazy, but that's it. And we are so grateful for the support and the help and the just plain love that the entire department has shown my stepdaughter. And as a stepmother, this means the world to me and I congratulate the department and I am extremely grateful and thank you. And I'm getting emotional.
Thank you for sharing.
Really, I'm laughing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief.
Erin, Jack, thank you guys so much. True, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. And that brings us to our final budget review item, which is the fiscal year 25 budget. Justin?
Yes. I realize, you know, the board's had a three and a half hour meeting. You know, I think from our last discussion of the budget, we had generally, you know, the board said you need some time to think about it. You have in your packet, the presentation, you have the budget materials. We've heard from some of our departments, we have a schedule in place to hear from departments, but, you know, two issues that I highlighted for the board, a good example is this, you know, we were able to propose include the restoration of the library and a DPW ground position, but we still have positions that we haven't been able to restore, right? And we've had some tough budget decisions. Advisory's considering the budget starting tomorrow. I want to know if the board, you know, is in line with the budget recommendation that I've presented to you and if you think it's a prudent way for us to move forward or if you want me to go back and work with Todd and make any changes or alterations to what I've submitted to you.
I think that the final product that's evolved over the course of the last two months fits within expectation from my perspective and I support what was before us at this time, but.
I as well.
And I think you were able to squeeze blood from a turnip and I know that it wasn't easy, so thank you for your work and I absolutely support the budget.
Thank you.
You've made the best out of a bad hand.
Great departments and a lot of collaboration with all departments and all of our collaborators. So I appreciate them and thank them for their hard work.
Thank you.
Well done.
I do have to ask though.
Yeah.
How much does GovFunds cost after the six-month trial period is over?
I know.
Believe me, we're going to talk. It was great to hear it, but this was a today discussion and we'll talk more about it.
I know. I wanted a two-year pilot.
I don't know if you saw my eye twitching from across the table there, but.
We'll talk more about it.
Yeah. Very good. Okay. So that brings us to our general updates. We were able to get half of them out of the way already, Justin, but what else do you have for us this evening?
Just one final update for the, for the, for the community because I know the board is aware, the town did receive a substantial earmark in the federal budget. It was advocated by a lot of partners, a lot of work with planning, DPW, select board and obviously Congressman, the Congressman's office, Congressman Oakenclaw and the town received $959,752 associated with our town center package sewer plant. So you're going to have some proposals and discussions with the board moving forward, how we envision utilizing those funds and so we'll be talking a lot about sewer in forthcoming meetings.
I appreciate you calling out to the number of people that had an impact on that process. That's not something that you just submit an email for and hope that it comes through. There was a lot of meetings and walkthroughs and analysis and feedback and questions that went into almost, what, two years that was on the table that we were trying to work on that. So obviously incredible appreciation to Congressman Oakenclaw and his team for coming through at the federal level for us, but sincere thanks and gratitude to everybody here at Town Hall that took that on as an extra thing on top of all the other things that we ask of them on a day-to-day basis. So thank you so much for calling that out. From the select board's perspective, I had one, I had a takeaway item from our last meeting to come back with a schedule for office hours proposals for going into the pre-town meeting season. I identified four days and times that I thought would work well to segment out as we work our way towards town meeting. The first one I had was Monday, March 25th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM here at Town Hall. I was thinking that the conference room upstairs would be a suitable place to be able to do that. The second one was Wednesday, April 3rd, from noon to 1:30 at the senior center. That window worked well for our last bagels with a board member meeting, so I imagine that would be a nice window to be able to go during the lunch hour. The next one was Friday, April 19th, from 9:30 AM to 11:00 AM at the library, in case there was anybody who wanted to bring the kids by to be able to take advantage of all those fantastic services that Sarah outlined for us. And then the final one was Monday, April 29th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30, once again here at Town Hall for another evening opportunity after work. That is four office hours leading up to town meeting. Open to thoughts? Open to thoughts, comments, suggestions?
I'm all for them. I can take whatever you want.
So, I'm going to say something I've never said before in my life. For the first two meetings, I'll be in Africa. So, I could do the April 19th meeting or the April 29th. Either one of those would be fine with me or both.
And what was the other one in April? Was it the 3rd?
The 3rd.
The 3rd.
What time was that on the 3rd?
That was noon to 1:30 at the senior center.
I can take the 3rd, 19th, or 29th, whichever, any of those are fine. I have a meeting on the other one that's in the evening.
Okay, so I will take Monday, March 25th.
Thank you.
Jim will take Wednesday, April 3rd.
And that's at the senior center?
Correct.
And I can do the last two.
Very well.
I'm retired.
And what time is it?
Noon to 1:30 is the senior center on April 3rd.
Okay.
And Anita will take the final two leading up to town meeting once everything is finalized and people want to come in and yell at somebody.
Hey, I can, I can do that. I have been yelled at before.
One question for the board.
Yes.
And this is based on what you want to do. You know, for some of these meetings, would you want me to attend? Are you okay with me attending or do you just prefer to just have a select board member?
I would prefer to just have a select board member from my perspective, although I'm open to feedback and insight from the rest of the board. I just feel like the outlet for people is that they get the opportunity to get a board member one-on-one.
No problem. No problem, me at all.
But one thing I do want to talk to you about, Justin, is the communication surrounding how somebody would sign up to be able to do this ahead of time and what the process is going to look like in terms of notifying the public that this option is available to them moving forward. But we can talk about that through one of our one-on-ones.
Well, the senior said he'd get it out of their monthly, on their bulletin.
Yes, sir. That's right.
And we should put the grant in the newsletter. I'm sure it's already in there, but the...
Yeah, we'll include that as part of the news.
The only last thing I wanted to note was I don't think that the intent was that these would be done every two weeks moving forward. I just put it in there for that cadence for the lead-up to town meeting and then, you know, obviously, the summer takeoff and then in the fall, probably go back to a once-a-month kind of cadence. And that was everything I had. Any updates, Jim?
No, I think we've had enough for one evening.
Anita?
No, no updates at this time.
Very good. Thank you so much. Our next item is the report of the warrants. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the warrants as printed in the agenda.
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. And our last item this evening is to approve the minutes. Do we have minutes to approve?
We do have minutes to approve, rip, uh... We have minutes to approve. I move that we approve the meeting minutes of February 6, 2024.
We hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. All right, that brings us to the conclusion of our agenda this evening. Justin, anything else before we break?
No, sir.
Very good. Jim?
Yes, just one thing. Chief Hines sent us a note recognizing one of our officers for some, what I would call exemplary work. I won't go into the details as, you know, obviously, they involve some personal situations. We consider ourselves to be a very safe town. We are a very safe town, but we're not without our, our issues, if you will. And there was an issue in a particular home that took exemplary skills, if I can put it that way, of our officer to calm down the situation and it wasn't endangering others, it was a person endangering themselves. And he just did an exemplary job and Chief Hines wrote us a letter commending that. And I'd just like to mention that it's Officer Hamilton and we congratulate him and the training that goes on in that police department to handle a situation in that nature as calmly and carefully and bring it to a successful conclusion. So, I just wanted to recognize that.
And just to second what you're saying, which I think is excellent, I think he afforded the person grace and dignity in a really difficult situation.
He handled it beautifully. Yep.
Absolutely.
Very well done.
Anita, anything else for this?
Other than that, motion to adjourn.
I could recite some poetry.